Father in heaven, we are so humbled and grateful by what you've brought us all together here to do this evening. We thank you for reconvening us, and we pray for your spiritual wisdom and guidance over the stewardship of all that you have provided this city. Give our leaders, those elected, and the staff members an extra anointing of grace and wisdom as they make decisions, and we pray that those decisions are for your glory, and we pray this in your name. Amen.
Mr. Ray, do you have an agenda?
Yes, Mr. President.
We'll start under Communications, number one.
Number one, receive and file.
Two.
Receive and file.
Three.
Receive and file.
Four.
Receive and file.
Five.
Receive and file.
Six.
Receive and file.
Seven.
Receive and file.
Eight.
Receive and file.
Nine.
Receive and file.
Ten.
Receive and file.
Eleven.
Receive and file.
Twelve.
Receive and file.
Thirteen.
Receive and file.
Fourteen.
Receive and file.
Fifteen.
Receive and file.
Sixteen.
Receive and file.
Seventeen.
Receive and file.
Eighteen.
Receive and file.
Nineteen.
Receive and file.
Twenty.
Receive and file.
Twenty-one.
Permission granted.
Twenty-two.
Permission granted.
Twenty-three.
Permission granted.
Twenty-four.
Permission granted.
Twenty-five.
Permission granted.
Twenty-six.
INS and planning.
Twenty-seven.
INS and planning.
Twenty-eight.
INS and planning.
Twenty-nine.
Receive and file.
Thirty.
Receive and file.
Thirty-one.
Receive and file.
Under reports, thirty-two.
Receive and file.
Thirty-three.
Receive and file.
Thirty-four.
Receive and file.
And under certificates, thirty-six.
Receive and file.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for coming today. I just want to let you know we have five speakers today. As the speakers are speaking, we ask that you would allow them the courtesy to speak. The speakers will only speak on the issue that is given. It won't be about personnel. No issues. It'll be about the issues that they're going to speak about. Up first, we have Mr. Mike Forney. He's going to speak about Powers Auditorium. Mike, if you would come up. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes. We have a speaker, ladies and gentlemen. Please be respectful of our speaker. Mr. Forney.
Thank you. Good evening to each council member represented here today. My name is Mike Forney. I am the president and founder of the Hot Topics Book Club Organization, the new social way of life and entertainment here in the historic gray city of Youngstown, Ohio. Hot Topics was established in February of 2008 and became a business in late January of 2011. Our mission is to provide exciting, unique social platforms for our community, this city, surrounding communities here in the Midwest region, to aid in the demand of literacy promotion, cultural awareness, and performing arts in film. After extensive research and study, in reference particularly to our Performing Arts Division, the Hot Topics Productions was created in early 2011 to bring back theater back downtown to its historic arena, in reference to the Warner Brothers, Powers Auditorium. The last run of theater downtown there in Youngstown came in the years of 2003 and 2004 and was very successful, averaging fourteen to seventeen hundred people to each performance. Earlier this year, on February 18th, Hot Topics was also successful in once again creating the demand for theater entertainment downtown Youngstown, with a near sellout for its first showing at the Dior Auditorium. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, we need your support and financial assistance. On one of the largest, most popular, celebrated holidays of the season, Thanksgiving weekend, November 24th, Hot Topics Productions will be debuting its second play production entitled, "I Was Fine Before I Met You", a family-oriented story of life and commitment, live at Powers Auditorium. With the success of this play, Hot Topics will be able to operate strongly within our mission while attracting more tourists, celebrities, and community, family, and friends back to the roots of our city, which was very strong in entertainment culturally. This will also help extend our vision and commitment to venues such as the Convoy Center and BMO Station right here in downtown Youngstown, which effortlessly creates business for our already downtown business supporters in by Martini, Lemon Grove Cafe, Gurness Cafe, to quickly name a few. Our obligation financially to successfully put on this highly anticipated Thanksgiving parade is estimated at $9,100, which includes rental and additional practice at the Powers Auditorium, light and sound stage setup fees, along with the set and advertisement necessities to ensure valuable and electrical experience for all in attendance in our city on this night. In conclusion, I myself, along with my team and community, Hot Topics Organizations following, promise with your support and assistance to display something magical that will indeed shift the consciousness of our generation and our next generation, to open doors of the past that are still valuable to our future here in the city of Youngstown. We thank you for your time, and may God bless you and guide you in the decision-making of our proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Forney. Next up, we'll have Mr. Thomas Zvedikovics talking about drilling. Welcome back, Tom.
Mayor, members of the city council, concerned citizens, elected officials are going to be making a few points about fracking, the fracking debate, and conclusions that stem from that. Quickly, this is a nuanced topic, and to hear one side of the story and not get a rebuttal, or even an answer to the rebuttal of the rebuttal is not enough. For a couple of points that the fracking industry always brings up, they are exempt from the Clean Drinking Water Act. Here is the Energy Policy Act of 2005, the actual page, and the actual notice that they are exempt. The reason the industry says that they're not exempt is another nuance. They are exempt from the fracking process forward after the drilling, but they were never under the Clean Drinking Water Act for what goes on underground. So to say that they are exempt is rather like being pulled over by a policeman and saying, "You can't charge me for not having a license that's expired because I never had a license." One of the main points that the fracking industry makes, and their paid advocates tell you, is that we have a history of safety. The difference between modern fracking and old-school fracking is the difference between a straw in the ground with the numbers of fractures radiating from it, and this. It's a huge difference in scale. It involves four distinct processes: directional drilling, 1991, high frac volume and fluid, 1996, slick water, 1996, cluster and multi-stack well pads, 2002. The animal that we're talking about, when we use the shorthand for fracking, it actually is about ten years old. It differs not only in its ability to produce gas, but in its footprint, both in the chemicals that are used, and its impact on the health and environment by a factor of about ten times. I don't know if any of you have actually considered what it will look like underground, but this is a map of the estimated laterals that will occur under our city. This scale is nine miles by eleven miles. Every fifteen hundred feet, you will have a fracked line approximately one to two miles. That line will have approximately two million gallons of toxic material, both liberated from the rock itself, the benzines, and from the chemicals that are put into it. This structure will be under our city if we allow fracking in the city. One reason that that's important is because we now know that the fracking itself can cause earthquakes. Quote, "Study from the Globe and Mail from British Columbia, a study by the B.C. Oil and Gas Commission that has linked hydraulic fracking with swarms of small earthquakes." This is not injection wells. This is the earthquakes themselves. They're very small. In rural areas, people tend to overlook them. This is not even including information found out about the injection wells. Those tremors can occur on a scale similar to this, and possibly on multi-levels of scales like this. Again, every fifteen hundred feet, like five per mile, those tremors will occur repeatedly with the fracking process underneath our infrastructure. The city needs to have a ten-year plan that addresses these questions: health, environmental impact of air and water, excess maintenance agreements between the city and the oil suppliers, infrastructure, and property value, and the effect that these drillings will have on future value. I just recently found out that the FHA is no longer guaranteeing mortgages on properties that have been fracked or adjacent to properties that have been fracked. Consider how many empty properties we have in the city of Youngstown, which will be unable to mortgage, and what that is going to do to the property values in our city. I have more information. "Cracks in the Facade" is an article twenty-five years ago, EPA linked fracking to water contamination. This shows that one well can affect another well. It can pressurize an existing low-level structure, a so-called biogenic material, and cause that biogenic material to migrate into gas wells. I urge council to continue its education. Keep in mind that the advertising really works. Repetition is very effective. We learn to read with repetition. We learn sports with repetition. And the advertising world knows that repetition is what counts. Multi-million-dollar ad campaigns are pitted against citizen activists who are giving up their time to bring this issue forward. Finally, I have a quote from a geologist who used to work in the field. "In ten to one hundred years, we are going to find out that most of our groundwater is polluted," said Mario Salazar, an engineer who worked for twenty-five years as a technical expert with the EPA Underground Injection Water Program in Washington. Quote, "A lot of people are going to get sick, and a lot of people may die." Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Gene Engel, speaking about drilling as well.
Thank you all, my fellow citizens, fellow council members. I was going to say the mayor, but the mayor is not here, is he? Where's the mayor? He's coming? I'm also disappointed that, I mean, I feel privileged to speak tonight because one of our elected representatives, Robert Hagan, has not been permitted to speak under suspension of the rules, although he represents 135,000 constituents in this area. However, I am here, and I would like to address city council specifically. I will be brief. I will not try to persuade the council and the mayor on the basis of facts about the dangers of fracking. We have brought those facts to this council many times, and they don't seem to make much difference. The mayor has said that he will introduce a resolution to this council to allow city lands to be offered for lease to the natural gas industry. But I asked the council to consider several things. First, the mayor has proposed offering something that is not his to offer. City land belongs to the people of Youngstown, not the mayor. Second, the mayor of Youngstown is not an elected official. He is appointed to his office, not elected to it. Third, as citizens, we are entitled to expect our elected officials, you, the city council, to protect the resources on which we depend. Those would include, most essentially, water and air. Hydraulic fracturing is a known threat to these resources, as we have pointed out and experts have pointed out time and time again. The resolution before you tonight is a blatant violation of our rights as citizens of this city. You, as council members, have an obligation to your constituents to, at the very least, provide ample time for its consideration, not to fall back on indifference or fear. The resolution to offer our land for leasing represents a huge overreach on the part of the mayor, and you must oppose it. Such a move must be brought before all the people of this city for a voter referendum. Then we will see what democracy looks like.
Next. Next, we have Patty Gorchus. Is Patty here?
Thank you. I appreciate you giving me the time to speak tonight. Although I do live in North Line, I'm still in Mahoning County. And what happens here will affect me in the long run, as they're putting in a new injection well or have drilled it already near my house. This toxic waste has got to go somewhere. I had a plan on saying all of these different things tonight, but I think God has a sense of humor, and he takes over sometimes, so bear with me. When I saw the reason why the watershed needed to be leased, as far as the housing issues and tearing these houses down, I'm one of those people that try to think outside the box. And as trusted officials, I would only hope and pray that you have gone down every single avenue as far as these issues are concerned with this housing. I'm originally from Altoona, Pennsylvania, and they started several programs over there years ago. And in the last forty years, they've only lost nine percent of their housing. One of the programs that they started was to sell the homes for a dollar to the homeless, to people that needed homes, and in turn gave them a low-interest loan in one year to get that house up to code. The information was then turned over to nonprofit agencies, who helped them with contractors, and everything was overseen at that point. Now, I don't know if that's possible here, but I'm just praying that you have done that and looked at every other issue. I know that between the years of 2010 and 2011, the largest increase of homeless people were reported in this county, at 21.9%. I know that there's got to be a better way. I spoke to the Attorney General's Office this afternoon because I was curious about this $2 million for demolition. And he told me that it wasn't necessarily earmarked for demolition, that there was a possibility that it could be used in this manner. And I would think that I do not have to stand here and tout the benefits of homeownership to anyone on this panel. As a matter of fact, I have some statistics right here from Habitat for Humanity. The children of homeowners do better in school and are more successful later in life. Homeownership acts as a powerful economic stimulus benefiting the individual homeowner and the national economy. Homeownership benefits neighborhoods, provides economic and social capital. Homeowners vote at a substantially higher rate than renters, 69% versus 44%. Homeowners are 15% more likely to vote in a local election. Again, I don't know if this is possible, but I can tell you that it's already too late for me. I put my house up about four months ago for sale. I've already lost an enormous amount of money in the value of it because I got hit harder than most out in rural areas. They've already permitted two drilling wells within four miles of my house. The injection well is four and a half miles from my house. Incidentally, it's the same company and the same depth as the one that caused the earthquake. I can only pray that the epicenter is not there, as we have miners on a daily basis in New Springfield, right next to my township. My daughter's school has leased their land. I think that some of these places should be off-limits. Watershed should be off-limits. Schools should be off-limits. They've approached my church to lease, and I think also cemeteries. They should be able to rest in peace. Please consider any of these options that I've given you. I would be more than happy to make more phone calls. I only had a few days to gather this information and to bring you more as I receive it. But if I was sitting on this panel, it's the what-if I would consider. The liability of water, that is supplying water to 30,000 people. Is it 30,000 or 300,000? I'm sorry, maybe I have those numbers wrong, but either way, it's an enormous amount. I think one's too many. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Is Rose Carter here? I didn't happen to see Rose. Rose Carter? Or is there anyone here that represents Action instead of Rose Carter? I got, I take, we'll take care of Bob Hagan. We'll take care of Bob Hagan. Since Rose is not here, Mr. Hagan, with the professional privilege, Youngstown City Council will allow you to speak five minutes to your constituents and to the citizens of Youngstown.
Mr. President, council, I appreciate the consideration deeply, and council as well. I obviously have been at the forefront of this discussion for well over two years. The discussion, ladies and gentlemen, was based on what I think has become not only the epicenter of earthquakes in the state of Ohio, but the epicenter of the discussion as well. And I was hoping that we would have learned some lessons from the gas and oil industry that have surfaced over the last few months relative to their way that they treat some of their customers, some of the people that they've done business with. But it would seem that in this particular case, Youngstown has not learned their lesson. And I would urge the council to just stop for a minute and think about what our obligation is to each other. I am struck by the fact that the gas and oil industry has been very successful in their advertising, in buying up thousands upon thousands of acres of our land, and then reselling them, in one case to France, a company called Total, which we now know that prohibits many of us from enjoying the fruits of our own natural resources that may in fact be shipped overseas. I introduced legislation almost well over a year ago for a moratorium. And the moratorium, Mr. President, was based on the fact that we just didn't have enough information. The information that we needed to move in a respectful, responsible way was missing. And as I did even more research, I found that the U.S. EPA was doing just what we needed to do to discover whether in fact fracking was safe. And the U.S. EPA will issue a preliminary report, Mr. President and council members, by the end of this year. And in 2014, they will issue a full report on what has happened and what can happen to fracking and the communities that in fact do that. And so today, when you take up a resolution saying that the private entities of the gas and oil industry can come and take our public property, as public servants, we have to stop and say that there's something definitely wrong with that. And so I wanted to testify here today to urge my constituents, my leaders, the people of this August committee and council, to move very slowly because I have tried desperately to work at the state level to make sure that everything is safe. Sure, we were successful in Senate Bill 15 and make it Senate Bill 315 and making it a bit more safe. But we still lost local control. We still cannot make decisions locally about the millions upon millions of gallons of toxic chemicals that are coming into our area. Those decisions have been abrogated by the gas and oil industry in 2004, when I was in the Senate. They took away local control from the townships, from the cities, from every local entity, and they gave it to the gas and oil industry. Now, I know that the horse is out of the barn, but you know, I don't think that we should allow the gas and oil industry to make horses asses out of us. And I think that, I'm just startled sometimes that we move so quickly in doing these things without having a full hearing. I understand, as I said to you earlier, Mr. President, that I represent 120,000 people, and I appreciate that you've given me this opportunity. You all represent the entire 67,000 people in this city, but we represent the public interest. We don't represent the gas and oil industry. And let me tell you what they have done. They have bought and sold the Ohio Legislature by campaign contribution after campaign contribution. So I don't want to be fools to the gas and oil industry. And I just told the reporter back there, I'm only against the injection wells. But I'm leaning more and more towards objecting to it all because of all the lies. And all the attempts that we have made to try to find out what kind of chemicals they're shipping into our community, what type of trucks they'll be running over our roads, what kind of property damage they will give to our community, and most of all, what kind of damage they could give to our water supply. Our environment is all we have in this area. And I remember when I first ran for office twenty-six years ago, everyone said the best economic development tool we had, tool that we had, was our water. And now we're giving it away for pennies. So let me close. My request today, Mr. President, I think is simple. I think we should have public hearings. I think that we should wait till the U.S. EPA issues at least, at the very least, their preliminary report. And then if we decide that we want to be part and partial to making some money off of this, then that's in fact what we can do, but we can do it as learned individuals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. I have a question from the floor. Ms. Gillum.
Okay, Mr. Hagan, first of all, I want to tell you, and I know you mentioned that the state legislator has been bought. And some of the people in this audience, and I'm not sure who, but have accused council and the mayor of being bought, which is not true. And I wish they would stop that. So I don't, hopefully, you know, you So I don't, hopefully, um, you know, you're not alluding to that same thing.
Ms. Gillum, can you speak into your microphone so we can record what you're saying?
And also, um, you say that the chemicals, we don't know what they're, you know, is being shipped. I understand that they have to disclose what chemicals they're, that they're shipping, that they're using.
Mr. President.
You're not allowed to speak. Okay? You're, that they're using in this process. I understand that they are, they have to do it now. There, there was a time when they didn't have to do it, but now they do. Okay? Um, and a lot of, and you say as far as like the, um, uh, you know, our gas cost is going to go down tremendously, natural gas cost is going to go down this year. And I understand that they do ship a lot of, uh, gas over into other countries. They do that with our lumber. Other countries get our best lumber. So this isn't something that's just started, it's been going on forever. And, um, uh, and, um, and I do want to address the, um, far the lady saying the mayor was not elected. The mayor was elected. He was elected to president of council, and he was moved up in the regular, normal process to be mayor of the city of Youngstown. Now, I listen to everybody, and I try, I have, I have a stack of papers on fracking, and I try to sort through the process, and I hate it when people give me misinformation. And there has been misinformation on, it might be on, on both sides. I know, I've heard it on the other side, and I try to sort through the ones from the oil and gas. So people, you know, we're not just listening to oil and gas, but I, I hate when I get misinformation from the other side. And when I try to tell people that there are things that are going on, such as recycling, and I get told, "No, no, there isn't, it's not true," but they won't listen. So they need to listen to on this, so, and I wish you would listen to. I wish you'd come to this meeting last night. We've had public utility meetings, and everybody, when we have something like that, you need to come and keep an open mind to the whole process. We're keeping an open mind.
Mr. Hagan responds, and we'll move forward.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, the chemicals that I was referring to are not, uh, they're still kept in secret, concoction of which they can multiply, um, the, um, the amount of chemicals, and they can tell you that from one to ten, there are different chemicals, but they don't have to tell you what the mixture of those chemicals are. Number one. Number two, the state of Pennsylvania refused to allow the fracking industry to dump any of their wastewater treatment, any of their, their brine into wastewater treatment plants because, A, they didn't know what the chemicals were, B, they found out that there was radioactivity in the, in there. So now, we don't have those same restrictions in the state of Ohio. The secrecy of that, what I'm speaking of, is that those chemicals, because they're all over the place, we're not sure of what they are, and that the fact is that the radioactivity that we're getting has been explained as just a normal amount of radioactivity. I'm confused about what normal is. Now, that answers the question, I hope, about the, the mystery of the, the chemicals.
So when do you expect this EPA report to be out?
It, it is, it, the preliminary report should be done...